When the noise starts, we know we're in.
Yes.
Okay. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Sunshine Law Notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall. Councilman Pataglia?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Here.
Councilwoman Sims?
Here.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Here.
Mayor LaBrus.
Here.
Stand.
At this time, would everybody please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes?
We need a motion to...
Like a motion to approve the minutes, please, for July 1st, July 15th, and July 22nd.
Motion. Second.
Okay.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
City manager's report, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. First item I have tonight concerns our tax bills. Those went out about 10 days ago, which obviously was later than they normally do with the due date. The normal due date is August 1st. Now, just want to report, anyone who's wondering, they went out late because the county was delayed in striking a tax rate. But because they were out late, the tax collector has extended the due date and is a grace period. Now, the bills will be due by August 29th rather than August 10th before incurring interest. If your bills are not paid, however, by the 29th, interest will accrue dating back to August 1st, the original due date. But they did, and they turned them around. The tax office turned them around real quick, really in less than two days after getting the tax rate from the county. We've concluded our summer concert program for this year. It was an extremely, as all of you know, I think you were all there for you, every one of them, very, very successful. We had the biggest crowds we ever had, National Night Out. We estimate we had over 600 people there that night. So, I want to thank everyone, the departments who had, you know, Recreation Department, TPW, that had a part in arranging the concerts and providing all our services there every week. But they really, they really turned out well. Other than, other than the one heavy shower that came down just as you started to speak, the night that Dupree's were there, we had pretty good weather also every week, so it ended up being a pretty good year. I'm happy to report that the paving has been completed, the paving program, which includes, included Euclid Avenue, which has been a thorn in everyone's side for the past couple of years. But John Street, Lawrence, Euclid, Ricardo, and Stanley Place have all been done, paving, ADA compliant curb cuts at the corners. Other than a couple of, a few punch list items on that contract, the work, the work has been completed. And this, this also included the work on the apron up at the firehouse on Summit Avenue, which was sinking badly. We kind of rolled it into this job. That's been done also. The new agency building, this is a county project, but it's a very significant one. The new agency building, or some people call it the New Justice Center, the construction has started on that project. It's been about three weeks that the county parking was relocated to the old record site, and now the site work has started on the building, which is going to take about 18 months, but, which will be a very, very significant structure in town. It's a beautiful building. As you know, they, they've asked that we sit on that screening committee, which I've been attending the planning meetings for this, and it's going to be something that's going to add another jewel, I think, to, to the city, even though it's a county, it's a county facility. The, as we discussed last night, we were discussing the trial, solid waste collection in the first ward. There was a bit of confusion, obviously, about Route 1, Route 2. I met with Mr. Costa today, and starting next week, we're expanding that trial to Route number 2.
Okay.
So, Monday, this coming Monday, the Route 2 people will get their tags put on the receptacles informing them of the program, and next Thursday will be the first second collection on Route 2. So, Route 1, Route 1 and 2 will both be done. And the last thing I wanted to mention, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the media that's here will pick up on this, perhaps waiting another week or so, but around September 1st, public service is going to be coming through town, well, a selected area of town, and doing what they call a reconductoring project. They're taking cables which are underground and have been underground for 20 or 30 years and replacing them. Most of the work is being done through manholes, and the, the affected areas will be, or the streets, will be areas of Summit Avenue, Ross, Herman, West Anderson, and Jefferson. There's going to be no interruption in electric service. Some roads may be closed, and some work may have to be done 24/7. When they get to the point where they're splicing lines, they can't stop, and they, they may be going right through the night or through a weekend. I, I did ask them to help us in getting some public information out, and they're going to distribute flyers in the neighborhoods where this work is going to be done, primarily because there's some kind of a liquid in the conduit that is totally harmless but is, is dirty for the workers that are involved. And the guys that are going to be doing this work are going to be wearing the white Tyvek suits that you see sometimes when there's an environmental problem.
Right.
There is no environmental problem, there is no contamination, there are no issues, but we don't want, I'm a little concerned that people are going to see that and get concerned and think something serious is going on. We're trying, and we're going to put it up on our website also, try to reassure everyone that there's nothing to be concerned about. This is routine work, routine, it happens every 30 years, but it's routine, no, no problems. But they're going to look a little strange, and that's just because they want to stay clean. That's about what it boils down to.
Right.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. You have this public hearing on the open space grant application?
Right. I guess we need a motion to open, if anybody's going to speak about that.
Open hearing, I believe.
Yeah, we have an open hearing. I'd like to make a, a motion to have an open hearing on this open space grant application, please.
I'll offer.
Second. Second? Okay, it's open. If anybody'd like to speak on this, now is the time to come up.
Regina DePasqua, I would love to speak on it, but all we have is...
It's not, it's not in the...
It's not in, it's not in here.
It's not in there, Deb. In mine, well, I have a different one, but...
All we have is number 6, public hearing on open space grant applications.
I would suggest that we continue this hearing to the next meeting so we can put some information in the book. I tell you, I missed this. I didn't realize it was going to be on. What, what this is essentially, we're making application to Bergen County Open Space.
Right.
And it's always, these projects that we apply for every year have to do with the parks, playgrounds, whatever.
Right.
We've got a number of things we've done. What we're applying for this year, there's a, a piece of equipment, play equipment at Columbus Park, which replicates the ship that Columbus came over on. You're probably all familiar with it. It's in pretty bad shape. It need, it's getting to the point where if we don't replace it, we're going to have to remove it.
Okay.
Because it's some hazards for the, for young people. So, that's what we're applying for. We're not sure we're going to get it, but we have been fairly successful.
We're going to carry this over to the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
I thought it was in the other package, that's why I continued.
Just one, one note, Resolution 359-13 pretty much explains...
Huh?
It pretty much explains the whole process. The only thing I'm concerned about is that Ms. Cavone, which is coming here tomorrow...
Tomorrow morning, yeah.
Right.
Right. Yeah, we should still wait.
The applications need to be in before August 29th.
Well, I think opening the hearing, that probably satisfied the requirement. If you want to, I tell you, if you want to use, just use the resolution for the public tonight.
Look, instead of the...
Would you like me to...
The first item, it's item 359-13 in your docket.
Would you like me to read that out loud?
Yes, if I could please read it.
Because not everybody has a copy of the resolution.
Okay.
Okay. It is Resolution number 359-13, whereas the Bergen County Open Space Recreation, Farmland, and Historic Preservation Trust Fund provides matching grants to municipal governments and to nonprofit organizations for assistance in the development or redevelopment of municipal recreation facilities. And whereas the City of Hackensack desires to further the public interest by obtaining a matching grant of $28,135 from the County Trust Fund for new play equipment for Columbus Park. And whereas the mayor and council has reviewed the County Trust Fund Program Statement and the Trust Fund Municipal Program Park Improvement Application and Instructions and desires to make an application for such a matching grant and provide application information and furnish such documents as may be required. And whereas, as part of the application process, the governing body held a public hearing on August 20th, 2013, which is today, to receive comments prior to the submission of this application. And whereas the County of Bergen shall determine whether the application is complete and in conformance with the scope and intent of the County Trust Fund. And whereas the City of Hackensack is willing to use the County Trust Fund in accordance with such rules, regulations, and applicable statutes, and is willing to enter into an agreement with the County of Bergen for new play equipment for Columbus Park. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack. Number 1, that it is hereby authorized to submit the above completed project application to the County of Bergen by the deadline of August 29th, 2013, as established by the county. And number 2, that in the event of a County Trust Fund award that may be less than the grant amount requested above, the City of Hackensack has or will secure the balance of funding necessary to complete the project or modify the project as necessary. And number 3, that the City of Hackensack is committed to providing a dollar-for-dollar cash match for the project. And number 4, that the City of Hackensack agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations in the performance of the project. And number 5, that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Okay. Forward, get a roll call, please. Got to get a motion?
No, no, still in public hearing, Mayor.
Okay, sorry. Because it was, it went to a resolution, that's why it was...
Well, she just read it.
I know, I'm sorry.
It's still in public hearing.
I'm sorry, it's a little, little confusing.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now that I know what it is, I can ask an intelligent question. The play equipment, are we going to replace the ship? I've seen that ship. You can practically take it apart and put it back together, and I've seen kids do it. Is that going, what the plan is?
Yeah, that'll be replaced.
It'll be the same type of thing because it is Columbus Park, the ship is part of it.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's, I tell you the truth, I think it's the same exact model. There may be a little, you know, little subtle differences, but essentially, we're replacing that with a brand new.
But that's the anchor of that park, is that ship because of the corner.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
I remember kids playing with it, and now they're in college. It's been there a long time. We got our money's worth out of the piece of equipment. It's been repaired a few times by Mitch, our maintenance person. He put a new floor because it was rotten once. So, my grandson's 13, so we had to be three, like 10 years ago. They reconstructed the whole thing, but it's, we got our money's worth. It's literally falling apart. I can't even say the term right now. It's wood, and it's breaking. But like Regina said, it would be very appropriate to have the same thing because of Columbus Park, with the Columbus ship. And many of kids, you know, played in it. It's, it's, it's a very unique piece of equipment. You, you think you're in a ship, and then there's all kinds of ups and downs and turns around. So, if they need any kind of public, we're consenting to do it, you know, we're...
We should make sure, I mean, that it's in line with what was there before.
Well, there's no question about that.
The same, yeah, the same thing, only just a little...
Like I said, there may be a couple little subtle differences.
Yeah, but it's going to be the same idea. That would be, that would be great. Because we have been re-ramping all the parks at, on a continuous basis, so this is the one that's been really neglected. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this?
I'm a little nervous. I've never really participated in a city council meeting, but I would like to add a little something. I've lived in Hackensack 60 years. Columbus Park is quite far from Hobart Street off of Green Street.
Okay.
We were zoned commercial many, many years ago. There are, there is absolutely nothing for the children to do, nothing. There's not a basketball hoop, there's not a piece of land. I helped in Englewood Habitat for Humanity. We built rows so the kids could make gardens, grow vegetables, and this was a big deal for them. We have nothing. The factories close on the weekends, and it breaks my heart to see little children having to ride their big wheels in the parking lot of a closed factory. We have no trees, we have no benches, we have no basketball hoops, we have no grass, we have nothing in our area whatsoever. And I'm, for me, I'm, I'm past the age of really caring. I can barely walk. But I look behind me, and I see the children coming up the same exact way I did. Columbus Park is way too far from where we live to let your children, even if they're eight years old, to walk there by themselves. It would be nice to have a portable hoop, close the streets off if you have to on the weekends once in a while, let the kids play in our area. It's considered almost child abuse for them to have to look at what they have to see in a commercial zone, which is totally upheld as higher than residential because they pay more taxes, so the Board of Health told me just two weeks ago. And that also insulted me and hurt my feelings. And, you know, like I said, I'm getting really too old for it to matter to me, but there are children coming up behind me, and they need something to do, they need a place to play. And it certainly would not cost $30,000 for them to have something to do, to keep them safe. They're, they're suspect of being criminals because they have nothing to do. They walk the streets. I mean, that's what we did as kids. Only, it was all homes, we all knew each other. Now the police are suspect of everyone. They're afraid of kids, and that's what they are, they're children. They just want to have somewhere to play, be safe from the drug dealers, from the police, from parents who are working two jobs, and that's all I ask on their behalf. And the street between, what is that, Lodi and Newman going to McDonald's, there's so many bottles. If you hit one...
So many what, bottles?
Yeah, it will eat your car. If you want to pave the street, that's, that's, that's a good one to pave. It will, it'll tear up, literally eat your car. So, I mean, you want to keep working Euclid Avenue, Summit Avenue, Columbus Park, there was never anything to do with Columbus. Grass was dried out, it was hot, they had a thing that spun around. There was nothing to do there, and there still isn't. And it's in the middle of factories, too. And little drug dealers are down there. They're the ones passing out drugs, I hate to tell you, and the police can't cut them down because they're too young. So, you know, we're like kind of in a quandary here. Something needs to be done on the other half of town. I don't mind being in between concrete, living in a concrete jungle, but do something for the kids, the children, for them. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Could you give your name and, ma'am? Could you, I need you to give your name and address to the clerk.
My name is Evelyn T. Martin Stewart, 52 Hobart Street. I have lived here my entire life, 60 years. I know every crack in every street in this town, and I know just about every store owner. They are gasping for breath, waiting, you know? I keep telling them, hold on, hold on, it's going to get better. I pray so. So, I, I wish you all well, that God blesses you with wisdom and the prosperity to fix this town the way that I know in all of your hearts that you want it to be. Because I remember, okay? I know many of you do, many of you might not because you're too young, but I worked on Main Street for nine years at Simcoe Shoes and W.T. Grant. This was the place to be.
We know that. Hackensack definitely was.
I mean, this is it. And it still can happen. The parking issue can be resolved. I drove a tractor trailer, we drove tractor trailers in 43rd Street in New York City into a building and up the ramps and parked them. There's no reason why a building on Main Street can't go up.
Mayor, if I could just jump in, there, there are certain rules concerning public hearings and what we can limit discussion to.
Okay, yes, we have to, the public hearing was basically on the playground.
I apologize, but...
Not a problem, but we...
The area thing for the children, number one.
We will look, we will look into it. We'll take a ride down Hobart Street.
I appreciate it.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Wyko Demoski, D-I-M-O-S-K-I. I live in Hackensack for 44 years, like, for the lay, she says, Hobart Street, for, for South Norman Street, and for, for, or, for Lodi Street, over the river.
Right.
Those streets is unbelievable. Those streets have to be fixed.
Okay, again, and not to cut you off, there's a time to speak about this at the public hearing part. This is strictly about...
Isn't this for...
No, this is a public hearing about an open space grant for a playground. That's all this is about. The public hearing, or the public portion of the meeting will be at the end of the meeting.
Because for the lay...
I, I understand, but...
One minute. For the Hobart Street, the Hobart Street is like...
I, I understand, sir. This, this right now, what we're talking about right now is only about a playground at Columbus Park. That's all this conversation's about.
For the public?
You can come back up later on during the public session and, and address it then.
All right.
All right?
I will say I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you.
And I apologize, as I said.
Not a problem.
I've never really spoken...
Not a problem. Thank you.
Your honors, Paul, I, I do respect you, and you're a, thank you.
Yes. Deb, you have the, also the timer?
Yes, I didn't know if we were...
Yeah, let's use the timer, because we have a lot of people tonight. We're going to, moving on, we're going to limit it to later on, we get to, because there's a lot of people here tonight, we're going to limit comments to five minutes. Okay? Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this? Seeing none? Have a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Offered.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims.
All in favor?
Aye.
To close the hearing?
Aye.
Okay. Are you voting on 359-13 at this point or no?
Later. Do we need to?
Okay.
Do we do it later or...
Mayor, we'll do it in order on, as the docket shows.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution number 326-13, final adoption of ordinance number 17, 2013, and ordinance amending Chapter 3 entitled Administrative Offices of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to Add New Article 8 Entitled Director of Economic Development.
This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing. Will someone so move?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Sims and seconded by Mrs. Canastrino. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Be resolved, oh, I'm sorry, that's you.
Public.
That's the city, buddy.
Public hearing?
Right.
Like a motion often, to open this to the public, please?
I'll offer it.
Offered?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Regina DePasqua, Parker Avenue. I see the position is, is for Director of Economic Development. Is this position going to be directing anybody? Is it going to, my basic question, is there going to be an economic development committee that is going to work with the Director of Economic Development? That committee, like Clifton has it, Englewood used to have it, I don't know if they do anymore, but it includes residents, business owners, a council member, they meet once a week? Or are the recommendations going to be solely those of the director without a committee, without a broad group from the city giving input to it?
This is, this is not a committee, because the committee had, was a different situation had to be approved by the DCA, usually a seven-person committee with only two people from the city actually on it. We didn't take that route, it was...
So, one person is, that's it? Just one person?
This is a, this is an employee.
Just one person, without, without a committee?
He's oversee, he's going to be overseeing. As far as a committee, the city manager meets also with the developers, as, as the mayor and the deputy mayor in this case.
As I said, Englewood used to have it, they had a director. I know Clifton has a director, and they have a committee.
Right.
And the committee meets once a month, and it's, it's realtors, it's residents, it's somebody from the, actually in Clifton, it's the mayor, is on the committee, and they all meet, and whoever has a project, whoever has an idea comes and presents it to the committee. So, a lot of people, you get a lot of input and a lot of ideas, not just one person.
This, this position isn't so much about ideas, this position is to meet, actually meet with the developers coming in.
That's what the Economic Development Committee does. They meet with the developers. If people have a project they want to bring into the city, you meet with the committee.
Right.
Not one person.
Well, we, we didn't go the committee route. We definitely, right now, we're just starting with one person, and his job is to be in charge of economic and development and redevelopment when he's, when he is appointed.
How about a she? Anyway.
Or she. One day, you're, you were correct. I apologize.
But no, I just think it would be more prudent to have a committee, because you get more ideas, different viewpoints, rather than just one person. And he's not direct, he's directing the economic development, not directing a committee. That's what he's directing, he or she.
Okay.
Okay.
Understood. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Could you please give your name and address to the clerk, please?
Sure. Jason Nudermacher, Prospect Avenue.
Thank you.
My first question on this proposed ordinance is what the salary would be, and if this would come with a city benefit package?
Yes, it will have a city benefit package. The salary, were you allowed to discuss the salary on this?
I'm not sure that the ordinance has been...
It hasn't?
It would go onto the salary ordinance, Mayor.
Right.
I don't know if that's, that amount has been struck yet by the manager and the county.
That'll be, that'll be set in the salary ordinance.
Right.
I should have ready for you to...
Right, so at this time, we can't discuss the salary. But there would be a benefit package, a city benefit package.
Okay, thank you. And would this person receive a full-time secretary? Or do we have a secretarial staff?
At this time, I don't believe so, no. He might not, it might not be a full-time, but he might get some assistance from within City Hall.
Okay. Regarding the substance of the statute, paragraph 3-27 subsection D, this seems to infringe upon the autonomy, autonomy of the zoning board and the planning board, and I don't think that would be appropriate, given the need for them, those two boards to be independent of the city council. Subsection E calls for the design and implementation of certain campaigns. Can you tell me if Mr. Ratino is a licensed planner or a real estate broker?
Well, number one, Mr. Ratino was an applicant, but he has not been, it has not been decided on.
Okay.
That's an appointment, this position is an appointment by the city manager.
Understood.[1708.75]
There's other people who've applied for this position.
My question would be, would a qualification for the position be a licensed planner, given the, the wording on the statute, designing and implementing different?
No, not a licensed planner, no.
Subsection F, securing property on the city's behalf, would he have the ability to bind the city into different contracts? Because that's how the statute reads, or excuse me, the ordinance reads.
Explain that again, Mr. Nunamacher, please, you're talking about F?
F.
Undertaking inventory.
Securing and promoting of sites, to secure a site, the way this ordinance reads, he'd be able to enter into contracts.
I don't believe he'd be able to enter into any contracts without, without the city council's approval.
What about the assisting and the financing of those, of the, of the transactions? Would the, this person be a licensed mortgage broker?
I don't think that's a necessity, and it, I don't think it's in the, was in the.
What would happen if the financing goes south, would the, the city then be on the hook for the deal still?
Well, we'd, go back to, let's go back up there.
Sure.
He's not securing financing for the job, he might be involved with the developers, I mean, usually with developers, they, they secure their own financing.
Understood, but this statute has the city being a business partner, or the potential developer, and the assistance of financing. Says it right there in the ordinance.
Well, assisting.
I just want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not against the position.
I see where it says assisting, but I don't see where we're partners with it, that's, I don't see.
I'm not, I'm not against the position, I think it's great as a taxpayer.
I'm just, I'm looking for the partnership word in here, that's why I didn't say it.
No, I, I'm just making analogy, to, to assist in something, if I'm helping someone out with financing for a deal.
Right.
That could, under the law, as Mr. Scrivino may know.
The city is not going to be on the hook for the finance, developers' financing, no.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Yes, Lance Stewart, Hackensack. Almost on the same subject as Mr. Nunamacher.
Yes.
And I think the question was about voting on something without a salary listed, or I believe Mr. Nunamacher just did that at the school board meeting, voted on a salary without it being, voting on a position without the salary being listed, so he should know the answer to that, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what she said.
Anybody else on this? Okay, where are we at?
Do we have to close this to the public?
Okay, motion to close this to the public?
I'll offer it.
Offered?
Second.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Deborah?
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen, and state of New Jersey that ordinance number seventeen two thousand and thirteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted. We need a motion to.
Make a motion, please.
I'll offer it.
Offered?
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry, roll call, roll call, please.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass.
Aye.
Resolution number three twenty-seven dash thirteen, final adoption of ordinance number eighteen dash two thousand and thirteen, a bond ordinance providing for various repairs and improvements to Firehouse Number Two in and by the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, New Jersey, appropriating three hundred thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the costs thereof.
This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing, will someone so move?
I'll offer it.
Offered?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Like to make a motion to open this to the public, please?
Just call for it, ma'am. Just call for the public hearing.
Call for public hearing, please?
Anybody wishing to speak?
Anybody want to speak on this? Seeing none? Offered, closed?
Offer.
Offered, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, county of Bergen, and state of New Jersey that ordinance number eighteen dash two thousand and thirteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted. And we need a motion.
Make a motion, please?
I'll offer.
Offered?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three twenty-eight dash thirteen, introduction of ordinance number nineteen dash two thousand and thirteen, and ordinance, amending ordinance number two dash eighty-two, section one twenty-seven dash four, entitled Violations of Penalties of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code. Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance nineteen two thousand and thirteen, as introduced, does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on September third, two thousand and thirteen, at eight o'clock P.M., or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Roll call, please?
We need a motion.
Need a motion, sorry. Motion, please?
I'll offer it.
Offered?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three twenty-nine dash thirteen, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack that the bills in the following accounts be and are hereby ordered paid, current fund fifteen million two hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred forty dollars and ninety-one cents, escrow twenty-eight thousand sixty-one dollars and forty-six cents, grants three thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents, payroll three hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and three cents, self-insurance seventy-one thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents, public parking system twenty-one thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents, capital three hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-one cents, trust account two hundred and thirty thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Could I please get a motion for the bills, please?
I'll offer it.
Offered?
Second.
Seconded by Sims.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three thirty dash thirteen, whereas it has become necessary for the city of Hackensack to appoint a temporary municipal judge pursuant to state statute for a term not to exceed one year, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack that the city finds it in its best interest to appoint Richard C. Tackvorian Esquire as a temporary municipal judge for a term not to exceed one year.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pataglia, roll call, please?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three thirty-one dash thirteen, whereas at the present time there are two handicapped parking spaces on Grand Avenue in front of Fairmount School, and whereas it has been recommended by the Traffic Division of the Police Department that these spaces be relocated to Fairmount Avenue, therefore providing utilization of the previous space on Grand Avenue for drop-offs and pickups only, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack hereby authorize and approve the transfer of these handicapped spaces to be located one hundred and one feet west of the southwest corner of Grand and Fairmount Avenue, and sixty feet west thereof.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Sims, second, please?
Second.
By Mr. Pataglia, roll call, please?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three thirty-two dash thirteen, whereas NeoPostUSA, Milford, Connecticut, has been awarded the New Jersey State Contract for Mailroom Equipment and Maintenance, and whereas the city of Hackensack wishes to utilize the state contract for the tax collector's department, whereas the purchase, installation, and training price total is eight thousand and eight dollars, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack authorizes the execution of the state contract for mailroom equipment and maintenance from NeoPostUSA, Milford, Connecticut.
Will someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Offered by Pataglia?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Canastrino, roll call, please?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three thirty-three dash thirteen, whereas Sanitation Equipment Corporation, Paramus, New Jersey, has been awarded the New Jersey State Contract for Parts and Repairs for Road Maintenance Equipment, and whereas the sanitation department of the city of Hackensack needs to repair Packer number two ninety-seven and two ninety-two, whereas the cost of these repairs is six thousand forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents, and four thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents, which is fair and reasonable, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack authorizes the repair of Packers number two ninety-seven and two ninety-two by Sanitation Equipment Corporation, Paramus, New Jersey.
Will someone please offer?
I'll offer.
I'll second it.
Mr. Pataglia, Mrs. Canastrino, roll call, please?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three thirty-four dash thirteen, whereas amendment of resolution number forty-three dash thirteen of February fifth, two thousand and thirteen, is needed as an error was made in the proper wording of the resolution, and whereas the city of Hackensack has a need to acquire software maintenance as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of state statute, whereas it has been determined and certified in writing that the value of the acquisition will exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, and whereas the term of the contract is January first, two thousand and thirteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen, and whereas Edmonds and Associates has submitted a proposal indicating that they will provide software maintenance for the Finance Department, tax collector, and utility accounting for thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack authorizes the city of Hackensack to enter into a contract with Edmonds and Associates as described herein.
Will someone please offer?
I'll offer.
Mr. Pataglia, second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims, roll call, please?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three thirty-five dash thirteen, whereas Foley Incorporated, Scataway, New Jersey, has been awarded the New Jersey State Contract for Parts and Repairs for Road Equipment, and a change order increase number one on purchase order thirteen dash zero three two nine four for repairs to loader number two fifty for the Department of Public Works is necessary, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack authorizes this change order increase number one to repair loader number two fifty from Foley Incorporated to Scataway, New Jersey.
Will someone please offer? I'm sorry, ma'am, there's no speaking during, during a resolution in the middle, I'm sorry. Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Sims?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Canastrino, roll call, please?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Number three thirty-six dash thirteen, whereas the governing body of the city of Hackensack has been advised that an emergency affected the safety and welfare of the citizens of the city and the general public when Hurricane Sandy damaged the Court Street Pump Station, and whereas the total cost of the repair was thirteen thousand eight hundred eighty-eight, eighty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents, which was a fair and reasonable quotation, now therefore be it resolved by the city council that the vendor Rapid Pump and Meter Service Company Patterson, New Jersey, be paid therefore.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Sims, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Canastrino, roll call?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three thirty-seven dash thirteen, whereas state statute provides that the Director of the Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made available by law and the amount was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Hackensack and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, hereby request the Director of the Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget of the calendar year two thousand and thirteen in the sum of one hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars, which is now available from state and federal revenues offset with appropriations for county ADA curb ramp improvements in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mrs. Canastrino, seconded by Mr. Pataglia, roll call?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three thirty-eight dash thirteen, whereas Dell Marketing has been awarded the New Jersey State Contract, whereas the city of Hackensack wishes to purchase various computer equipment for the Health Department, whereas the purchase price is five thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and seven cents, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack authorizes the purchase of computer equipment for the Health Department from Dell Marketing.
Will someone please offer?
Offer. Second.
Offered by Mr. Sims, seconded by Mr. Pataglia, roll call, please?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three thirty-nine dash thirteen, whereas the city of Hackensack wishes to apply for funding for a project under the Safe and Secure Communities Program, and whereas the mayor and council has reviewed the accompanying application and has approved said request, and whereas the project is a joint effort between the Department of Law and Public Safety and the city of Hackensack for the purpose described in the application, therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council that as a matter of public policy, the city of Hackensack wishes to participate to the fullest extent possible with the Department of Law and Public Safety.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Second.
Offered by Mrs. Canastrino, seconded by Mr. Pataglia, roll call, please?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three forty dash thirteen, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack, the following officers are hereby appointed as a Class II Special Law Enforcement Officer for the two thousand and thirteen calendar year in accordance with state statute, Andre Almeda, Mark Carrillo, Marco Chiafari, Jeffrey Campese, Tyler Delcorpo, Andrew Duffy, Daniel Francavilla, Christopher Gotti, Mike Rosi, Ryan Lindsay, Michael Rayo, Douglas Salazar, Daniel Sawicki, and Vincent Saykursky.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Sims, second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Canastrino, roll call?
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three forty-one dash thirteen, whereas the City of Hackensack has maintained the following properties by providing grass and lawn maintenance to the said properties, one forty-five Van Hame Street, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, three fifty-four Hamilton Avenue, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, two fifty-two Berry Street, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, twenty-five Martin Terrace, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, two twenty-six Passaic Street, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body that the above charges are certified to the municipal tax collector and she is authorized to convert the above charges to become a lien upon such lands.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Pataglia. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims. Roll call, please.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three forty-two dash thirteen is being pulled as was discussed before as there is not going to be a bond ordinance introduction this evening. Resolution number three forty-three dash thirteen, whereas it is the desire of the City of Hackensack that the petty cash fund for the Human Services Department be rescinded. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Hackensack hereby authorizes such action.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pataglia. Roll call.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three forty-four dash thirteen, whereas it is the desire of the City of Hackensack that the petty cash fund for the Finance Department be rescinded. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Hackensack hereby authorizes such action.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Pataglia. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sims. Roll call.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three forty-five dash thirteen, whereas Peggy Newfeld was the former custodian of the Tax Collection Petty Cash Fund. Whereas the City of Hackensack changed the designation of a custodian to Elisa Kocchia. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Hackensack hereby authorizes such action.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pataglia. Roll call.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three forty-six dash thirteen, whereas pursuant to an advertisement in the record, bids were received for one new two thousand and thirteen E three fifty Super Duty van with tow package class three. Whereas two bids were received from All American Ford and Bayer Ford. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack award the bid for one new two thousand and thirteen E three fifty Super Duty van with tow package class three to All American Ford Hackensack, New Jersey for the contract price of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Sims. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Canestrino. Roll call.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three forty-seven dash thirteen, whereas the City of Hackensack wishes to amend resolution number three thirteen dash thirteen and change the appropriation number on purchase order thirteen dash zero three three seven one in the same amount of seven thousand, three hundred dollars for Elmwood Services Patterson, New Jersey and whereas the total amount of the purchase order will stay the same in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council authorizes this change in appropriation number only to Elmwood Services Incorporated Patterson, New Jersey.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Mr. Sims? Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Canestrino. Roll call.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three forty-eight dash thirteen, whereas the City of Hackensack publicly advertised requests for qualifications for physician services August two thousand and thirteen to August two thousand and fourteen through a fair and open process. Now therefore be it resolved that the contract for physician services for the period of August two thousand and thirteen to August two thousand and fourteen be awarded to Dr. Arthe... Arthur Chaney and Dr. Dewey Chaney, two fifty-nine Berry Street, Hackensack, at one hundred dollars per hour.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Offered by Mr. Sims.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Canestrino. Roll call.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Resolution number three forty-nine dash thirteen, whereas state statute authorizes contracting units to enter into cooperative pricing agreements and whereas the Educational Services Commission of Morris County hereinafter referred to as the lead agency has offered voluntary participation in a cooperative pricing system known as the Educational Cooperative Pricing System for the purchase of work materials and supplies and whereas the City of Hackensack desires to participate in the Educational Cooperative Pricing System, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack that City Manager Steven Loyacano is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperative pricing agreement with the lead agency.
Will someone please offer?
Offer.
Mr. Sims? Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Canestrino. Roll call.
Councilman Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilman Sims?
Aye.
Councilwoman Greenman?